Trustees present this evening are trustee Castillo, trustee Alvarado, and trustee Romero, with trustee Lorenzo Calderón Jr. and trustee Ciro Calderón absent. You have a call.
Stand up for the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Any, there's no public comments right now? Okay, we'll go into closed session. Session, let the record show that Lencuca Calderón came in at 5:03 and Ciro at 5:20. Thank you all for coming to our meeting. There was no action in closed session. Comments from the public, we have three requests. One is from Solano Ayana.
So I just wanted to thank you guys for the upgrades that you guys have been doing at the animal facility. They have been very helpful. It looks more clean back there. We have seen a lot of support from our principal, from our advisors. It's been very different. I actually came to invite you guys to our showcase. It's the 21st, next Friday. It starts at 10:00 a.m. If you guys are welcome to come anytime. And I handed a letter so you guys can know the dates and stuff and everything that's been going on back there. So, thank you guys for your help. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Another person, Mario Solano? Maria, I'm sorry.
Good evening, board members and public in general. I'm here also to give thanks for all the support that we've received on your guys' behalf. We felt a bit retaliated as parents because we were requested to do some fingerprints afterwards in order for us to go to the facilities in the back. Then we were sent an email saying that we were allowed to go back there, but only the parents, which is fine, for safety reasons or for whatever, it's fine. But once again, like I said, we felt retaliated for coming to you guys and explaining the, whatever what's going on in the back. But anyways, that's, I guess, something you guys might want to talk to Mrs. Williams or to whoever you guys need to speak to because if this is going to continue for next year, this is going to be a challenge for a lot of people. I mean, as parents, we don't want to teach the class, but we're supplementing the, whatever, we're helping out our children. And this is, like I said previously, this is an investment that we do on these animals. Anyways, there's, on the changes that were made as well, the farmhand was let go and there's now a security, a proctor, whatever it was. But the help that this young lady used to do, I mean, we're only three, four weeks away from fairville, two weeks now, and she could be helping out the kids even more so. And now we just have a proctor, which, I mean, somebody has a job, right? I mean, great. But what if it was this young lady that was actually helping out the students as well? The advisors have been out there, greatly appreciated. They should have been there out there to begin with, from the get-go. But now the farmhand is no longer there. She was helping the kids a lot, and I hope you guys can look into that as well. And then invite you guys, of course, to the showcase, which is the 21st, at 10:00 a.m. at the farm over here in Colexico at the animal facility, I'm sorry. And I would really hope that you guys can look into, we can do this maybe on a weekend. This is my daughter's last year, she's a senior. But for next year, if you guys can look to see if you guys can do it on, maybe on a weekend, the showcase is kind of like a pre-fair showing for the kids, and it's on a weekday. We could have invited buyers, but we can't because they're probably busy. I know that the advisors are not getting, what can I say, overtime? But if this is something that they're dedicating a little bit of time to and that they're doing it from the bottom of their heart, it should be coming, regardless of them getting paid extra or not. Anyways, that's all I have for you guys there.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Garcia?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Margaret Saus, and I'm the executive director for the Sherhopline Crisis Center. And I wanted to come also and thank you and the school district for allowing us to come in and give trainings for the parents. We're really going into a lot of schools and meeting a lot of parents, and we expect to expand more. And I feel good coming into here, you know, I graduated in '64 here from Colexico, and feels good to come back home, even though I drive in here all the time. But just, just coming into the school and all that is, is a good feeling. So I would like to hand over a certificate, okay, if it's alright, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, for those who do not know what Sherhopline is, we are the only sexual assault agency in the valley. So we deal with a lot of issues, sexual harassment, date rape, all kinds of training. So it's very important nowadays that we get and go in and train the young men, young women, and, you know, we're very happy to do that. So please count on us whenever possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Como papás también queremos agradecerles a ustedes porque nos han permitido dar más seguimiento, educarnos a nosotros para no nomás tener un conocimiento mayor como persona, no? Sino que también nos están dejando una gran lección en de darle una buena educación a nuestros hijos. Y pues aquí está mi compañera y ahí está nuestra compañera Sara, que venimos de representante del grupo como padres y decirles los frutos que nos hemos brindado. Nuestros hijos han recibido reconocimientos, han recibido certificaciones de las escuelas, y probablemente digan, pues sí, es trabajo del niño. Sí, es trabajo, es un deber del niño tener buenas notas. Pero ese trabajo también va de la mano tanto de los maestros como en casa. Si no hay una buena educación en casa, no va a haber una buena educación afuera. Entonces, todo esto se debe a la escuela de padres que Sherhopline nos está brindando y el espacio que ustedes como miembros del distrito nos están brindando a prestarnos un salón, a darnos café, a darnos galletas, y decirnos el salón es de ustedes. Y por tal motivo les queremos dar también las gracias.
Buenas tardes, pues mi nombre es Cynthia Covarrubias, y también nada más para continuar con lo que decía mi compañera Zoe, agradecer esta oportunidad que nos brindan. A veces uno piensa, ¿qué herramientas puedo hacer para que mis hijos tengan mejor educación? Pero nos damos cuenta que es un conjunto de cosas, no? El tenerla, ayudarlos emocionalmente, a veces eso les crea más seguridad para estar mejor académicamente. No solamente es lo importante, el conocimiento, sino también que tengan una autoestima valiosa. Y pues estos cursos nos han enseñado como padres que no solamente enfocarnos en nuestros hijos, sino primeramente estar bien como padres para poder ofrecerle lo mismo a los hijos. Y pues, en lo personal, yo puedo decir que he aprendido muchas cosas y he visto los frutos de mis hijos, más, están más seguros de sí mismos, están más contentos al hacer las cosas, salir a su escuela, y hasta pueden ayudar a otros compañeros que los ven en situaciones difíciles. Gracias.
The next item is H. Presentation, H1, highest attendance.
Alright, so one of the goals that we have here in the district is attendance. And so, we have a lot of competition that's going on, which is friendly, but it's a competition between schools. And so, first of all, I would like to have Mr. Diego Romero, please come up, the principal from Enrique Camarena Junior High School. Enrique Camarena had the highest attendance for January, and so now we have somebody new that has the highest attendance for February. And so, he is going to pass on the trophy, and Mr. Calderón is going to pass on the certificate and the banner that is put proudly up at the, at the school that has the highest attendance. So it gives me great pleasure to announce that the highest attendance for February is Blanche Charles Elementary School. And Ms. Montaño is here with her staff, if you can please come up. Absolutely, if the staff can please come up, this is a great, yes, please, have them all come up, absolutely. And you know what, I'm just going to add a little history here. In December, both Enrique Camarena Junior High School and Blanche Charles were co-champions, in other words, had the highest attendance. And in January, Enrique Camarena came ahead, and very interesting, now for February, Blanche Charles comes ahead. So they're definitely going toe-to-toe, so again, let's give them another big round of applause.
Next items, H2, student representatives, Adora Adi Wong. Okay. You do.
Good evening, board members. Adi Wong couldn't make it. He's got a job and he's working, which is a good thing. For the month of January, we've had awards assembly on the 17th. Some of our, many of our students were recognized on that date. On the 18th, many of our students participated in the Martin Luther King Cleanup Day at the Kennedy Gardens. On the 7th of February, we had a group of 40 students go to IVC on a field trip. We've got ASVAP testing, which is Armed Services Vocational Altitude Battery Test, next week. In a couple of weeks, we have the PSAT, which we haven't had in a number of years. And then on March 5th, the Circle of Friends will team up with the Willie Moreno Circle of Friends, and they'll head to the county fair. And then tomorrow, Valentine's Day, our students have uniform optional day. The red shirt, they can wear it, means that they're taken. The white shirt means that they're not taken. Thank you.
The high school, Abigail Sepeda.
Good evening, my name is Abigail Sepeda, and I am the Public Relations Officer at Colexico High School. In the month of January, we held elections for our winter homecoming court and presented them at the basketball homecoming game. The day of the game, we also had a lunch assembly where Drumline and the cheerleaders performed. That week, the ASB leadership class created a spirit week that students could take part in in order to be involved in show school spirit. On the 7th of this month, we had a parent picnic day where Drumline performed in order to create a cheerful environment for the parents. Last week was counselor week, and the ASB leadership class made posters to show appreciation towards our staff and posted them outside the counseling office. On the 20th of this month, the ASB class will be having a blood drive, where students above the age of 17 and adults can donate blood for the San Diego Blood Bank. This week, seniors have been getting cleared in order to make payments for grad night. And this month is CTE month, and the ASB leadership class has been working on making posters to give to teachers in order to show appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ninth grade campus, Kristin Noriega.
Good evening, my name is Mia Burgos, and I'm filling in for Kristin today because she couldn't make it. This month, at the ninth grade campus, we had our winter homecoming spirit week, which consisted of pajama day, fandom day, black and white jersey day, and extreme garnet. We also presented the ninth grade homecoming skate at the pep rally at the main campus. Counselors' week was last week, and we celebrated by making thank you posters. Next week, we will celebrate CTE teachers. Last but not least, we had a parent picnic last Friday, and students were able to enjoy lunch with their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Enrique Camarena, Adara Peña.
Good evening, board members, administrators, parents, and students. My name is Adara Peña, and I'm the vice president of Enrique Camarena. In the month of February, we celebrated our firebird athletes and held a school-wide pep rally led by ASB leadership. We added competition activities between seventh graders versus eighth graders. Seventh graders wore DC and eighth graders wore Marvel. The excitement could be heard across the school. In the end, it was the Marvel who beat the DC. Yesterday, our counseling department led the student field trip to IVC and STEM and MESA program. The students reported, they, I'm sorry, the students reported they had a fun excitement. Oh my goodness, we can't talk today. Today, we held our annual Valentine's dance for the, for the den. Oh my god. I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize. And today, we held the annual Valentine's dance. And each ELLA class, in seventh grade, we, we elected a princess and a prince. And in eighth grade, we elected a king and queen. And on the 18th, students are preparing to compete in the spelling bee contest, in which I hope I win. And finally, finally, on the 26th, Mr. Romero and Ms. Fisher will have a special awards assembly for students who met the standards on the S-PAC. And we invite you to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Willie Moreno, Nestor Durazo.
Good evening, my name is Nestor Durazo, and I'm the school representative for Willie Moreno Junior High. On January 30th, we hosted our fifth annual Aztec Fire Talent Show. The participants did an amazing job, and to, to make things better, Willie won first and second place. On February 11th, we hosted the Valentine's Cupcake Course. We had a few participants, and would like to encourage more people to come and participate in the next cupcake course. Our parent picnic is tomorrow, where parents can show their love for their kids by bringing them lunch and eating with them during lunchtime. Our Valentine's dance has been rescheduled for Friday, February 21st. Aside from the good music and dancing, we will also vote for prince and princess, and also king and queen. This is all we have to report at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. H3, student of the month recognition, Adora High School.
And I will be stepping in for Mr. John Moreno. He stepped away because he is announcing a great exciting basketball game that we have today. Our girls are playing at home, and they are, from my understanding, have the IVL title. And so they are definitely playing, and let's give them a big round of applause for that. So they're definitely representing us proudly. And so, if we can have our first student of the month, and if the parents can also please come up, we really appreciate it, Cynthia Noriega Ponce, please come up. So I'll read her bio. This is Aurora. Cynthia is a daughter of Veronica Noriega. She enjoys hanging out with her friends and going to the gym. She enjoys coming to the school to see her friends, and she has a good relationship with her teachers. If Cynthia could change the world, she would love for the world to have a healthy environment. Her ambitions are to have a stable job and maintain her family. Cynthia would like to thank her mom for her love and support. She would also like to thank her teachers for motivating her to be the best that she can be. Just give her a round of applause. And next, if we can have Fabian Vargas Flores, and parents, please come up. Fabian? Quick bio read. Fabian is a son of Liseth and Gabriel. He enjoys listening to music. What he likes best about Aurora are his classes and teachers. If he could change anything about the world, it's to improve the environment. Fabian's ambitions are to work and help maintain his family. He would like to thank his mom, friends, and family for always believing in him. Congratulations.
Now we have the high school.
This first student of the month at Colexico High School is Julisa Ceseña. Julisa Ceseña is currently a senior at Colexico High School and has an overall GPA of 4.17. She is involved in varsity volleyball, varsity basketball, and track. After high school, she plans on going to a four-year university. She would like to thank her parents for always pushing her to do her best in school and her teachers for always helping her grow. The second student of the month at Colexico High School is Emmanuel Serrano.
And he is a basketball player as well. Could mom please come up?
Emmanuel Serrano is a senior at Colexico High School and has an overall GPA of 4.17. Emmanuel is in varsity basketball. After high school, he would like to go study at UCLA. He would like to thank his parents because they have always been there for him.
Ninth grade campus.
Our first student of the month is Cristel Vázquez. After graduating high school, Cristel... After graduating high school, Cristel would like to attend UC Berkeley and major in criminal psychology. She would like to attend, she would like to then pursue a career in law enforcement, hopefully with the FBI. Currently, her favorite class is English literature, and her favorite teacher is Ms. Pannella, who teaches her English class. Outside of the school, she enjoys playing the piano, which she has done for the past two years, and enjoys dancing ballet, which she has done for the past four years. She also enjoys spending time with her older brother and her two younger sisters. Cristel is inspired by her parents and would like to thank her family and friends for always supporting and believing in her. Our second student of the month is Francisco Montezillas. After high school graduation, Francisco would like to attend San Francisco State or San Diego State to major in nursing. Currently, his goal is to become a nurse and later pursue further education in, in the medical field to become a surgeon. This school, this school year, his favorite class has been MESA at the main campus. His favorite teacher is currently Ms. Magaña, who teaches him math. His hobbies include playing baseball and studying geometry online. Francisco is inspired by his mother, who has successfully raised him and his siblings by herself after the passing of his father. He would like to thank his aunt and uncle for being his caregivers and his mom for always seeking care of him.
Enrique Camarena?
Our first student of the month is Nelly Munguia. Her hobbies are playing sports. And her favorite, her favorite sports are softball and basketball. And her favorite subject in school is English language arts. And when she graduates, she would like to go to university to study medicine and later become a surgeon. And she would like to thank her family for always encouraging her to study hard and for things she always wanted to accomplish. Our next student of the month is Jonathan Artiaga. His hobby, his hobby is playing basketball, and his favorite subject in school is PE and math. And when he graduates, he would like to attend college and begin working on his film career. And he would like to thank his parents and family and teachers because they motivate him to do better every day and try his hardest no matter what. Thank you.
Willie Moreno?
Willie Moreno's eighth grade district student of the month is Fiona Quan. Fiona has two siblings, Sophia and Emma. Fiona likes all her classes equally. Her favorite food at this time is noodles. Her favorite color is blue. She would like to visit China at some point in the future. Fiona's role models are her parents. Her short-term goal is to continue to have straight A's. She hopes to attend UCLA one day. In the future, Fiona would like to travel to, travel the world. We hope your dreams come true, Fiona. Willie Moreno's seventh grade district student of the month is Steve Garcia. Steve Garcia is the son of Diana Manuel Garcia. He has four siblings, Vivian, Manuel Junior, Christian, and Adam. Steve's favorite class is math. His favorite food is hamburgers. His favorite color is blue, and he loves pop music. Steve's dream car is a minivan. His role model is LeBron James. In the future, he hopes to travel to France, New York, Boston, and London. Steve is looking to get straight A's to make his parents happy and to train his dog. In the future, Steve hopes to attend UCLA, UCR, or Harvard. Get a good job and live a happy life. We wish you the best of luck on your journey, Steve.
Now we'll get down to staff presentations. Willie Moreno's staff, Junior High School.
Good evening, board members, members of the community. We have two very outstanding staff members to present to you today. Of course, I feel the same way about everybody at Moreno, but unfortunately, we can't select them all. So, we do have our two here today. So our classified staff member of the month, employee of the month, is Ms. Gladys Baltasar. Gladys, come on up. She has been a member of our Aztec family for five years. She is a compassionate, knowledgeable, resourceful, and insanely hardworking individual. She plays a crucial role in maintaining our school's network and student access to learning technology. In the five years that I have known her, I've not seen her struggle with any technical issue whatsoever. In short, she keeps us connected and accessible. She is our go-to person with anything related to technology. She is an expert-level multitasker. I once walked into her workspace, and I see 15 Chromebooks lined up, all running updates, while she was working on teachers' computers, and she still solved my issue without missing a beat. She is always smiling and brightens up any room she enters. Gladys, on behalf of the staff, students, and parents at Willie Moreno Junior High School, we thank you for your passion for our school, its students, and its staff. You are an amazing person, and I am truly blessed to be working with you. You are a very much valued member of our family, and so congratulations on employee of the month. Our certificated employee of the month is... Our certificated employee of the month is Mr. Victor Pina. Mr. Pina, come on up. Mr. Pina has been a member of our Astec family for four years. Mr. Pina came to us from Kennedy Gardens... Rather, I should say, we stole him from Kennedy Gardens. He is a collector of all things Transformers and an avid sports fan. He is a highly resourceful and passionate teacher. His love of learning and teaching is evident in every aspect of his work. He inspires the students to always give their best. As our athletic director, he is instrumental in planning and implementing student athletic events, and along with our ASB, he plays a huge role in establishing and maintaining our school culture year in and year out. He is one of the most respected individuals at Moreno, a person that our students and our staff have come to depend on and admire. He is a leader, a teacher, a mentor, and a friend. It is inspiring to see his passion for his work, his students, and his drive to ensure that his students have everything they need to focus on learning, and his devotion to his family is second to none. I consider myself blessed to be able to work alongside such a wonderful human being. Mr. Pina, on behalf of our staff, students, and parents at Willie Moreno Junior High School, we thank you for your passion for student well-being, your willingness to share your knowledge with your peers, and for being an all-around awesome person. You are a valued member of our Astec family. Congratulations.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break for the cake. Please go ahead.
And he's off to the basketball game.
Yeah, 'cause I got the... 'Cause I got the game.
Thank you, Mr. Pina.
Yeah? But they're playing here. In San Jose? Approval of the minutes, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Move by Mr. Castillo, seconded by... Seconded by Lorenzo Calderón. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Now we'll go to J informational items. J one.
Good evening, trustees and community. Just a few announcements. I want to announce that we had a great parent turnout for our LCAP community meeting, which was held on Tuesday, February the 11th, at Dual Elementary School. The focus was in the area of technology, where the Digital Academy One-to-One Program was highlighted, as well as our robotics program. It also highlighted all the other technology tools our students have access to in the district, such as 3D printing, green screening, augmented reality, virtual reality, and many others. There was also a great article on that that came out in the Imperial Valley Press. And so with that, just want to thank all of our community for attending. And also, it was the first time that we ever streamlined an actual LCAP. So just like these meetings are streamlined, we also had the LCAP Community Forum streamlined as well. The other announcement is we do have a new website. So we're very excited to the report that we have transitioned into the new district and school websites. So the new website gives Calixco Unified School District a modern, fresh look with the ability to easily navigate when searching for information. So the websites were designed to be very personal and give a glimpse of who we are throughout our district. So I welcome everybody to go to our new websites and check it out because they're... They're awesome. Do want to report that we did have our... Congratulations, first of all, to all of our students who participated and won in the Second Annual Cesar Chavez Track Meet that was held at Ward Field on Saturday, February the first. All of our elementary schools participated, which filled the event with excitement as they competed against one another in the different categories. A huge shout-out goes out to all the staff who were present to facilitate the event, and especially want to give a shout-out to Mrs. Mayra Molina, principal of Cesar Chavez, for organizing and hosting the event that was definitely... Had a lot of adrenaline flowing. Some upcoming events, we do have no classes on Monday in observance of President's Day. We do have a special board meeting coming up on Tuesday, February the 25th, and we do want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's. So, thank you.
Thank you. J two, measure V update.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Gonzalez, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Great. Community members. I want to update the community and also the board on our progress that we're making for, again, Project B one, which is the Culinary Arts Academy. So the work is progressing as on schedule, and I hope I don't use too much technical terms. I'll try to use the... Use language that... Instead of construction language, I'll explain to you what we're going to see here in a moment, okay? So the contract's completed, working through all of our unforeseen conditions, like I mentioned last time that we gave the report. The interior and exterior walls are receiving the furring, which is two-by-fours. So you can see it here. Maybe we can get the lights down a little bit. So I have a couple pictures here. The one on the left is the before, and the one on the right is the after. So the furring relates to the wood that you see that's being installed along the walls on the interior. Those... That is going to be utilized for the sheet rock and also for the tackable walls that gets nailed to that... To that structure. So you can see the progress that's been made inside this building. Let's go to the next set. On the outside, you'll see the sheeting that's going up. This is the plywood sheeting. That will receive stucco finish. Again, the picture on the left was about two weeks ago, and this one is on the right. All of the seismic renovations have been completed in the project. So we are on schedule. We're scheduled to move back into the modernized facility in March of 2020. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. So this is the high school modular classroom addition. This picture was taken about, again, two weeks ago. This is when we were setting the forms for the... For the foundation. Next. And this is the foundation that the classroom is going to be set on. So those piers that you see, the round piers, are about 20 inches deep, and the... You won't see much happening right now because this takes about two-week cure time. And when the portable classrooms or modular classrooms, excuse me, when they arrive, they're going to be set on this pad. And it... The contractor is telling us that when they set the... The modular classrooms, that they're going to be set within a day or two. They'll have them all craned and in place. Doesn't mean that they're occupiable in that one or two days. It means that they're just going to do it that quick. So it'll be something to see. The district also has a drone, so if you go onto the website, you can see the pictures from when it was conception to completion, or that's the plan, is conception to completion. But you can see the drone shots from, you know, from all of the excavation and everything that's been going on here. So we also have had... The IID was onsite working on the electrical upgrades for the new buildings. We have the furniture specifications that have been developed, and the furniture's been signed off on. The modular fabrication is happening at the plant, and we have a board visitation on the 28th of this month to the plant to see the classrooms as they're being fabricated. We are planning that No Name Field. The lights for No Name Field will be installed by the end of April, and the cranes are scheduled to move the components, talking about the modular classrooms, March 30th through 31st is when they're going to start arriving onsite. Our master plan, we have done our summary site visits. The summary site visits are completed. We're doing... So we're continuing to do the inventory of the existing facilities. When I mean to say that, when I say they're completed, the elementary school sites are completed, and we're finishing up the secondary sites. We also are securing a proposal to do the demographic study, and also tonight, we'll be looking at approval of a proposal or contract to do the deferred maintenance plan that's required for the master plan. Okay? Questions?
None.
Oh, yes. Also, when school gets out, the portable classrooms that are on the... That are at the northwest portion of the property, we're going to be moving those off. They're going to go over to where the football field is. And that's going to make way... That'll make way for the A3 project, which will start right behind this one. Okay? So we're moving.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
J three, association comments. Yes? That's fine.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here right now, just first of all, thanking you for the response of the proposal. We received it yesterday. But at the same time, when I was reading, I was a little bit disappointed to shake the general information that you sent with our specifics, and also seeing the reflection of the future, because we have it here with our teachers. That's why I came here, just to bring you this. CACA stands with ACT, and ACT stands with CSEA. Be careful because together, we can do more. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Taylor. I'm president of Associated Calixco Teachers. So, good evening, board members, superintendent, members of the public, teachers, classified staff, educators, students. I don't have a lot tonight, but first, I want to make a recommendation. It's not specifically about our negotiations, but it can affect future negotiations. So I'd like to make a recommendation to the board to review and approve a resolution in support of the Schools and Communities First Initiative. This initiative will effectively increase California's budget for schools by $4.5 billion a year by repealing the Prop 13 property tax freeze for major corporations. Companies like Disney and Chevron pay 1970s tax rates on their properties. This underscores a basic trend we're seeing across the country. The tax code is enabling the very rich to pay less while forcing mostly everyone else to pay more. The Schools and Communities First Initiative will level the playing field by making corporations pay the same property tax rate that pretty much everyone else does. It also must be said that this initiative does not change any tax rate for homeowners or for agricultural land. So please join us by supporting the Schools and Communities First Initiative. The new commercial property tax revenue will provide additional funding for schools and local governments to use for affordable housing, healthcare, homeless services, parks, libraries, public safety, and of course, remember, $4.5 billion per year for schools and colleges. So this afternoon, I sent all of you a sample resolution. I hope you consider adopting it or something like it. Next, I think it's clear that ACT stands in solidarity with CSEA, as we are now both threatened by the district with regard to our healthcare. I'm still not sure I understand the district's motives. In the time of this district's greatest amount of funding by far, you want to turn all of your nonadministrative employees against you. All of your teachers, your administrative assistants, counselors, bus drivers, librarians, school psychologists, school nurses, instructional assistants, custodians, social workers, maintenance workers, all of the people you work with and count on. You're threatening us all now. You're putting us all in the same boat. But we will stand together and will stay united in our effort to right this ship, to get you back on course, to restore the peace and prosperity of our district for all of its employees and for the students of Calixco. We all deserve better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm J five, RFP committee.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm sorry, J four. Insurance committee. My apologies.
No problem.
We had hoped to be able to bring some prices from the RFP that went out, the request for proposal, but the vendors had asked for an extra week. So we will be able to present that information at our next insurance committee meeting, which will be next week, and we'll have a report out at the next board meeting with some more financial details on what those costs will be. That's the update.
Thank you. J five now.
Thank you, president. Yeah, IVR O P, they're proud to announce that their mobile lab will be on wheels soon. This lab will provide STEM career exploration, verotics, and how to middle schools throughout the valley. So they start... They'll be starting April 1st, and they'll go through the valley, exploring careers for these middle school children or students. That's all.
Thank you. I'm J six, LCAP committee.
Good evening, everybody. I'm giving you the LCAP update number two. Community members, it's... I left copies right there, so if you didn't grab one, they're available. It's what's posted up there. But it's an update of where we're at. So if we go to page four on the... So this is our goal one. That's where goal one starts. So we continue to have our committees, multiple committees that we meet. For example, we have the science committee that aligns, is trying to align the path for science for the high school. We did that last year, so this year, we're working with the junior highs, and then from there, we'll start working with elementaries. We also have the report card committee. We've worked with Kinder in the past a couple of years, and now we're starting to work with our K... First through sixth. We have the E O master plan, also that is in charge of the planning for our English learners. We continue to have curriculum planning meetings at all levels and throughout content areas. We textbook adoptions, we're still looking into piloting and adopting for science and history at the elementary and secondary level. On page five, you're going to see professional development opportunities. We have PD related to MTSS. We had multiple staff, counselors, teachers, administration attended the MTSS at the county a couple of weeks ago. We still have professional development for our classified staff, and a lot of technology trains continue to take place throughout the months. We also have our tech leads that continue to support staff on any... Whatever their needs are and what interests them to receive professional development on. On page six, we start with goal two. Number two has to do with technology, so we continue to update devices. We continue to enhance our infrastructure. We're funding the digital one-to-one program under this category, and we're also funding other programs that we use, such as the mobile device management system, the library management system, School City, for example. Next page, page seven, we start with the college and career goal. And again, I'm not going over every single one, I'm just highlighting some of the things. So we continue to support our CT programs. Each teacher has funding. So if you see on the right side, there are some sample items of what can we continue to purchase for our different programs, such as our ag, our auto shop, our welding, and so forth. We also have... They are also attending workshops and conferences under this fund. We continue to have our credit recovery programs at the high schools level. And we're also funding our assessments. So far, we funded the PSAT for every student. So coming soon will be the SAT and the AP testing for our students, so that our students don't have to pay out of pocket for taking these tests. And then the back, we continue to host college and career activities. In March, we have planned to take our students to the Comienza con Un Sueño at UCSD, and sites are also going to different field trips on their own. But this is where the funding comes from. Then on goal four, that's our people engagement. So this is the goal where we oversee attendance and our community day school. We're monitoring our suspension rates under this one. Schools have funding to implement the positive behavior and intervention programs, and we also have our athletics... And we also have our athletics, our intramural, so like the track meet that we have and the Lobos soccer classic that's coming up. This is where the funding comes from, from this, from this action and this goal. The next page, page 10, highlights are our Saturday schools. We continue to host Saturday schools, and those will continue until the end of the year to be able to not only recuperate ADA, but also to ensure that our students are recuperating the academics that were lost during the days that they were out. And we also have tutoring. Tutoring can be both academics, or it could be enrichment. So for example, if a teacher wanted to teach music after school, this is where the funding would come from. Our summer school is under this goal. We have already begun the planning, and we were looking into selecting the schools where we're going to be hosting our summer school. We believe, I think we're going to be on the, on the, what's that site? The west, west side, the west side, because last time, we held it here. Originally, we had plans of hosting it in the middle, between KG and Rockwood, but we're going to be doing some construction work, not necessarily construction, payment, we're doing payment repairs. And so we're going to have to move our summer school to either Blant Charles, Mainz, around those schools. So we'll provide an update as to where we're hosting our summer schools. Callexico High School will be hosting summer school at the ninth grade campus. And then our FRC, I know, I didn't, we haven't seen pictures, but I know that, I was there today. And so the modernization of our Family Resource Center, or our new FRC has, it's probably completed by April, we said? And that's where the funding is coming from. We opened our Parents Center already, it's one of the buildings that is in there. On goal five is everything that has to do with parent involvement. So we've been running parent trainings. Some of the parents have spoke about the Sure Help Line, this is where the funding comes. And you can see multiple meetings and trainings that we've offered for parents under this goal. On the backside, on page 12, we start with goal six. And this is the goal where we address safety and facilities. So programs that we've been funding through the safety actions is Catapult, our Emergency Mass Notification System, Raptor, which is the visitor management system, our Alice Training, our K9 visits to our different sites. We also fund our campus security and our students' supervision assistance to increase against the safety at our sites. We have a safety committee that oversees some of the initiatives that we have. And we also ensure that our safety plans, which you're going to see in one of the items, are in compliance with what the law requires that we have. And then sites still continue to use their site safety funds to purchase parking tags, parking tags signage, medical supplies, first aid kits, speed bumps, umbrellas. Each one uses their money based on their needs. And then you're going to see on the last page, page 15, what our budget is, our total budget, what our expenditure is for every budget, for every goal, and then what our balance is. So right now, we spent about half of the funds in our LCAP. And we're about mid-year, so we have a mid-year to catch up. And then the other thing I want to mention is that this is an LCAP season for me. So this is where we start with our stakeholders' input. As you heard Mr. Gonzalez say, that we did, we had held our second forum and community forum, our Parent and Community Forum this last Tuesday. Every Tuesday, we're meeting at a different site for each one of our goals. So the one that just passed was, we did goal number two, which is technology. Next Tuesday, we will be at Blant Charles. It'll be on goal, excuse me, it'll be at Kennedy Gardens. Yes, goal three, which is College and Career. And then the following Tuesday, after that, will be on goal four, which is Student Engagement, and that will be at the CHS Ninth Grade Campus. The following Tuesday after that will be March 3rd, it'll be at Blant Charles. Goal five is Parent Involvement. And then the final meeting will be held at Rockwood. That will be on March 10, and that's on Safety and Facilities. Today, we held day three of our ACT consultation. And so tomorrow, we'll finalize and get all of their input. After that, I'll be working with administration on the 21st on their input. Then on the 27th and 28th, I have the CSEA consultation, where they provide their input. I have the migrant Parent Committee and the DILAC Committee, when I get input from those two different groups of parents. And then I also have the students at Callexico High School. I visit main campus, and I have a variety of students representing different subgroups. And we go over what their needs are. We don't go in detail like I do with the adults, because we don't go over every action. But we do talk about what are some of the actions that are in place to support their learning. And then after that, we go with the Court Committee. The final committee is called the Court Committee, where we have representations from all stakeholders. And then we review everybody's input, everybody, from CSEA, SAT, ACT, sorry, students, and so forth. And then that's where we give the final recommendations. And then from that, we draft our LCAP, and then we bring it to the board. Well, actually, it first goes to the county to review. We make adjustments, and then we bring it to the board for approval. So for the, by the time we meet next time, we should be with the Court Committee, and we should have received everybody's input. So by March 13, I'll be working with the Court Committee.
Thank you. I'm J7, any comments on accounts payable free list? And then we'll go to J8, proposed budget by Governor Newsom presentation.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Gonzalez, community, everyone in attendance. My name is Cesar Vega, your Assistant Superintendent of Business. So tonight, I want to talk to you about what the governor has proposed for next year's budget, 2020, 2021. As you know, by law, he has to present his budget to, you know, to the legislature, and he has to make it public by, in the middle of January, January 10th. And it's the first initial proposal. From there, I can assure you that from now until May, there will be revisions that are going to be driven by either the economy or anything that happens worldwide. And then from the May revision, we also have, you know, there still can be changes from the May revision until the time that, you know, the final budget is adopted on June 30th. So I'm just going to give you a brief summary of what the main highlights are in this initial proposal. And what the governor is recommending is $1.2 billion more towards the LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, that translates into a 2.29% COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment. So it's, it's, it's not what we were told before, what we were hoping. We were hoping somewhere in the run, in the neighborhood of 3%. But nevertheless, you know, the legislative office, we're estimating a 1.79%, so I guess it's coming in the middle. So it's going to be driven again by how the economy does. So by the May revision, you know, we can either have better numbers or worse numbers. So we don't know that yet. So that's still in effect. So what does that mean? What is a 2.29% COLA for us? So right now, if you look at the column that says 2019, 2020 base grant per ADA, that's what we're getting right now. Okay? So if you factor in a 2.29% COLA, it'll give you on the far right column, the total increase per grade group of funding. And again, it's, that's what's projected for the next fiscal year. Then, we also have two grade span adjustments, and that is typically for Kinder through third grade, and also for 9th through 12th. Those two groups receive additional funding. K3 is for the grade span adjustment. And, and high school is for the CTE career, career technical education funding. So for K3, you're looking at a 10.4% increase. And for the 9th through 12th, it's an additional 2.6% increase. So when you factor that in, the grade span adjustment on the far right column will give you the net projected amount for the following year, based on the grade groups. Okay? Then, in addition to that, so we have, we are one of the recipients of supplemental and concentration grants. So from the adjusted 2020, 2021 adjusted funding, projected funding amount per ADA, once you include the grade span adjustment and the COLA, you get, for anything above 20% of supplemental students, you get an additional 1,739 for K3, 5,999 for K6, and 1,647 for 78. And then 9th through 12th, you get 1,958. And if our, because our duplicate account is so high, we're at about 91%, we get even more funding in terms of concentration grant. So when you, it's 50% of the, of the grant, of the base adjustment grant. So for instance, on the K3, we're supposed to get 8,697. 50% of that will be $4,349, also more funding that we will get for that grade group. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so then, so what does that mean for us? So what we are projecting for 2020, 2021 LCFF funding thus far, based on the numbers that we are given right now, we are expecting $105 million. That's what we are expecting to receive under LCFF. And that is including the grade span adjustment, that is including supplemental and concentration dollars. So it is based on a projected average daily attendance of 8,697. Okay? So that gives us, when you divide the 105 million divided by 8,697, then you get an approximate per ADA funding per student of 12,000, just over $12,000. Okay? Yes, sir. So the attendance number that is projected, that's the first P1, what we call a P1, that is a report that is due to the state on our CALPAS system. So that is the number that we are getting certified as of, as of October. So we still have P2 that will be certified around March, April. So that will give us, you know, a more up-to-date number. But for the purpose of this presentation, the number that we are using is the last certified report that we have, which is, which was due on October of 2019. So next year's budget, it could be higher, it could be lower, depends on how we do. Typically, we are funded on, based on prior year's P2s. So, you know, we have to use what our last certified P2 numbers were. So whatever that number was last year, that's what we will use to start projecting our budget for next year. The issue that we have right now is that we are declining in enrollment. We are minus 200 and some, almost 250 students. So that brings our average daily attendance down. So, but like I said, right now, we're using the 8,697, because that's the last projection, the last certified submission to CALPAS that we submitted back in October. Questions?
No.
Okay. So I borrowed this slide from School Service to California, just to give a reflection of what school districts throughout the state are facing. If you look at 2019, 2020, obviously, this year, we receive a 3.2, a 3.26% COLA. So what you see in the blue is the base funding growth of $273. You want the supplemental concentration dollars to 200, of, I'm sorry, of $52. And then that'll give us a net increase of per people funded of 325. That's what we are getting right now currently. But however, when you look at the column on red, where it says step-in column increase of approximately average $148, then you look at the increases in Stairs and Purses, 68 and 29. And then what you see in between the dotted line, which says Special Ed contribution, that's the number the districts still have to contribute from the general fund into programs that are, you know, not sufficiently funded, like special education. So what's projecting now for 2020, 2021, as you can see, we are expecting to receive an increase of, to the base grant of 193. And then you factor in the $38 for supplemental and concentration dollars. So the average increase for next year, based on the 2.29% COLA, is just 231. Yet our contributions, you know, to Stairs and Purses continue to go up. Special education contributions continue to go up. And that's pretty much the story for the next, you know, 2021, 2022, and 2022 and 2023. So now the LCFF is being fully funded. We are not getting the augmented COLAs that we used to get, over 3%. We are now leaving, in spite of the economy doing pretty good, we are now getting, you know, minimum COLAs, which is, in this case, what is being proposed is 2.29. So when it comes to special education and funding for preschool, preschoolers with disabilities, so again, this is the initial proposal. The governor is proposing 645 million dollars towards AB602. And that's going to be distributed through the CELPASS. It's, it's a per ADA amount that we normally get. So that's still, again, we don't know how is it going to be allocated, you know, what formula is going to be used? That's just the initial proposal that's been thrown out there, 645 million dollars for next year. When it comes to preschoolers with disabilities, they're looking at a 2020, 2021 allocation of $250 million. And it's supposed to be one time. But again, we don't know how, what the criteria is going to be used for, how's it going to, how's the money going to be distributed, basically? So we should note more by the May revision. So hopefully, we have more specifics of how the money is, if, if it doesn't change, we will know then how the money is going to be distributed, what's going to be the criteria for the money. We also receive a mandated block grant. It's, it's, it's outside of LCFF. We get from, you know, school districts normally get for K8, they get about $32 per ADA and $63 for 9th through 12th. So we are still, you know, we, we are still under that grant, so the funding will also come our way. What is not in the budget is any increases to the LCFF targets. Like I said, we are a full implementation now. There is nothing in the, in the governor's initial proposal to raise the floor, so that we can get more money. There is nothing in that initial proposal. Last year, there, there were payments that the governor made towards offset the, the cost of Stairs and Purses increases. This year, we're not, you know, he's not proposing that for 2020, 2021. And there is no one-time money anymore. That was mostly under Governor Brown, that we used to receive one-time funds. Governor Newsom is not following the same pattern. And with that, I'll open it up to questions the board may have.
Thank you, good presentation.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Real quick, this one. In his budget, you mentioned at the end, differences between governors. Newsom, Lawless proposal are one-time funding.
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean?
So in the past, Governor Brown, mostly Governor Brown will give us a one-time funding-based, you know, criteria that, you know, either for facilities or one-time funding that he was appropriating. You know, like any excess revenue, he would, he would make a contribution outside of the COLA as a one-time, I don't want to call it bonus, but as a one-time amount for school districts based on ADA. So Governor Brown did that quite a bit under his tenure. But as far as Governor Newsom, this is, again, this is his second budget, and he's not proposing any, any one-time funds for districts or anyone. Yeah? Questions? All right.
The next item. Board reports. J9.
So thank you, and again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. I guess I'm still kind of thinking about Cesar's presentation, it's on our mind. A lot of quick information, I know there's much more to the budget proposed. And again, Newsom's budget in January is just that, a proposal. You know, given the numbers and the budgets that California's looking at, a lock and change between now and June, May revision, and by the time it's signed, you know, by June. But there's a lot for, I think, the board to keep an eye on and watch. I think, one thing I'm, I'm kind of interested in as well, maybe the board as well, you know, monitoring California's projected budget. You know, we're looking at our future here in Cal, in the district in Callexico, and these impacts affect, you know, what direction we set for, for this community. In addition, I think, you know, you didn't mention too much about the federal budget, but we're also keeping an eye on that. You know, there's already some proposals out there that's being shared, potential reductions as well, education, social, social services, safety nets that can impact our district. So there's a lot for us to keep an eye on, and a lot of information that we need to keep abreast on as well. And it may not be a bad idea to have a bit more information or special presentation, just looking at our budget and our future for this district. Aside from that, LCAP presentation last night, I think it was? Was it last night, two nights? It's a short week, right? Very pleased with that. Again, I didn't make it there on time, but as I was traveling in the meeting, I was watching it on YouTube. So I was one of the people watching it virtually, which gave me, you know, I was there present for the presentations and the student presentations until I got there. Very pleased with, you know, that LCAP forum, and there will be many more good ones. But it's kind of, at that night, just leading me to think about, you know, this district has done a lot with this, in this particular area in technology. And it's not just buying laptops and going one-to-one or Chromebooks, but there's a lot more to the foundation that's being set, be it the infrastructure, the wiring, the professional development, and all the support behind it. You know, it's very all-encompassing. But I think, you know... But I think, you know, we've done a lot as a district. I think we're at the point where we can now think about what next steps, you know, what's our future? The kids are driving our future, and they are our future, we say that. But where is this leading to? I think I'd be interested in kind of exploring the idea of looking at either Technology Academy or a school within a school, or even its own school, a charter or magnet school, something, you know, not that we can start looking at down the future. You know, we're saying the steps, the seeds, the ideas now that may come to fruition years from now. But we're at that point, and I think this district is far ahead of many other districts in this county, where we've been progressive and we can start thinking about where we want to go with student learning and classroom instruction, using these tools. I'll leave it at that.
Very good. And it's, it was incredible to see the parent engagement with these robots. I mean, I didn't grow up in this era of technology. And to see the parents actually engaged in, with these robots, it was incredible. And not, of course, the, the children that were teaching the parents how to use the robots, how to park them, you know, program them and park these robots and so forth. So that was incredible. Again, that's, that's our future, like Mike was saying. Again, good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. Congratulations to those staff and, and students that were recognized to, tonight. Keep up the good work, and that's why we're here in Collexico. Also, congratulations to our boys' basketball, our girls' basketball team, and our boys' soccer team. They're both, all of them are representing Collexico. In fact, I think the basketball team, the boys and girls are playing tonight. Again, our boys beat Brawley, and that was a very good game, very fast game. And it was incredible to see our boys overcome Brawley. And again, good work, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to echo the same sentiments as my colleagues. Just want to thank everyone for showing up here tonight, especially our students and staff that were recognized here tonight. I also want to say good luck to our boys' basketball team, our girls' basketball team, and our boys' soccer team tonight. Here, I also want to say good luck to our Collexico FFA is going to be presenting at the fair. I know we're going to have a board meeting from here to then, but I just want to wish good luck out there, especially with those projects. A lot of these kids depend on it, and, you know, that's pretty much what I want to leave it at. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to our meeting. Congratulations, first of all, congratulations to all of our students and staff that receive awards tonight. Very good job that you guys are doing there. Also, we, I attended the LCAP meeting with, with, and I was really impressed with the robotics. The robotics team got to hear what they had to say, so that was really good. I attended the basketball game immediately afterwards. And I get a little bit too excited sometimes, so I had to stay on the corner because I was ready to go and talk to that referee, but... But we won, that's the main thing, we won. And good, kudos to our coaches that they have to go through all that and, and keep a straight face talking to those referees that sometimes don't feel like they're going against us as well. So kudos to our coaches. And last but not least, congratulations to all the counselors. Happy Counselor Week. I know it was last week, but congratulations to them on their week. Well deserved. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us, and congratulations to Blanche Charles for the highest attendance and to all the employees and the students for their being recognized. That's all, thank you. Next item will be K one. Agreement between Collexico Unified School District and BSN Sports Reward Program to participate in the sports rewards program.
Make a motion to approve this item?
I'll second.
Made by Castillo, moved by Alarado. Austin Ferris, say aye.
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 Unanimous, thank you. B two, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and School Services of California, Inc. for negotiations to support special services.
Move to approve.
Motion by Siro Calderon.
Second.
Second by Alarado. Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. K three, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Food Group for the lease of new copiers and printers district-wide.
I move to approve.
Moved by Siro.
Second.
Second by Alarado. Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. K four, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and Iowa State University for Student Internship Cooperative Program.
So move, second.
Moved by Alarado, second by Castillo, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. K five, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and CDR Electrical, Inc. for electrical work at Rockwood Elementary.
I just would like to, what is, what are they doing?
So there is an entire building that the cable link is just seeing better days. We have a lot of power outages. Electrical, it's, and it's inside the attic, the area that we can't reach. So we need support on this, we need to get it fixed ASAP because we are experiencing a lot of power outages. And it's just, again, it's, I mean, the building is just old.
So move. I'll second.
Motion by Lencho Calderon, second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K six, agreement between Collexico Unified School District and GigaCam for technology contracts for E-rate services.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Siro, second by Castillo, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Seven, number seven, member of understanding between Collexico Unified School District and Imperial County Office of Education Support Services, Department for Nursing LVN Services.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Siro, second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K eight. Member of understanding between Collexico Unified School District and RideTrack for Support Services on Sales Abuse and Safety.
So move, second.
Motion by Alarado, second by Siro Calderon, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K nine, approval of revised board meetings, agenda dates, and deadline calendars for twenty twenty.
Mr. Gonzalez, just for the record tonight, can you explain the reason for these?
Right. The board meeting that is currently scheduled, it falls right before going now to break and spring break. So we're just requesting it to be moved when we come back from spring break.
Thank you. So move.
Moved by Alarado, second by Castillo, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. K ten, approval of school site safety plans.
So move.
Moved by Alarado. Second by Lencho Calderon, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K eleven, approval of the English Language Learner Master Plan nineteen twenty-one.
So move.
Moved by Alarado.
Second.
Second by Siro Calderon, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K twelve, approval to seek proposals for food and non-food items on behalf of the Imperial County School Food Service Cooperative.
This is the same thing from last year, right?
Yes.
That is correct.
So move, second.
Moved by Lencho Calderon, second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Approval of Dixon Smart Schoolhouse Proposal for the Development of a Deferred Maintenance Plan.
And did we talk about this last board meeting?
Not last board meeting, but what this is, is in order for us to be able to take advantage of, you know, any prop money, bond money that is out there, we need to be able to have a deferred maintenance plan. And so by having this in place, then in the future, when there is monies available, then that is going to be a requirement.
So one has to be developed.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve, second.
Moved by Siro, second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, four, four in favor, one against? Thank you. K fourteen, sunshine initial proposal to CSCA Chapter three ninety-nine. Any comment?
So Carlos, the proposal that we sunshine. Are we going to, when are you going to talk to us about that? Because for what she said on the podium is...
So, so we had the, the special board meeting where we had the negotiations. And so that was discussed in that negotiations, special board meeting. So what we're bringing it now is the proposal that we discussed with the board to have it approved. So the next step is to go out to negotiate, right? Now it's to go out and negotiate, which we already have dates with CSCA.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
By Siro, second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. K fifteen, twenty twenty CSBA Delegate Assembly Election Nomination for Subregion eighteen B.
Move to approve.
Second. For Diana.
Okay, moved by Siro Calderon, second by Castillo, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K sixteen, professional internship permit for Marco Ricardo Alvarez for the nineteen twenty school year.
Move to approve, second.
Moved by Siro, second by Castillo, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Proposal for Collexico High School sixteen classroom modular project elevator shaft inspection.
So move.
Well, I have a question before you move. Wasn't this part of the whole contract? Or why is it...
Right. So, so what happened is, in order to have this inspected, because, you know, it is part of the elevator shafts, there has to be a DSA inspector. So we do have a DSA inspector. However, the DSA inspector that we have is, does not have the certification to be able to certify elevators. So this is very specific. So that's why we have to have a contract in place. Right. So it is budgeted?
So it is, so this is, so yeah, so there's an elevator that will come with this modular building. What you are approving here is someone to, a DSA inspector in essence, to go to the site and evaluate the construction of it and certify that it has met DSA guidelines.
What I'm saying is, why did the company that's selling those modules is taking responsibility for it?
And that's a very good question.
That's on us. It's something that we have to evaluate. They, they can build it, they're building it. Yes, we are, we have to make sure that it is according to...
You need an independent individual.
Correct. Correct.
Right.
And I understand that, it's just that you look at the pre-list and all this money that we're spending. I'm surprised that we still have money left to do.
Unfortunately, it's a requirement by the state. It is not our, it is not our doing.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Kiki.
Second.
By Siro Calderon, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. K eighteen, first reading board policy, three thousand six hundred business and non-instructional operations.
So on this one, we're talking about new consultant law.
That is correct, and all of these are recommendations that are put out by CSBA.
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Castillo.
I'll second.
Second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Aye.
Thank you. K nine, certificated employment report? We'll go back to closed session. Okay, we'll go back, we can reconvene into closed session. We're back in open session. Any, I can take any closed session? Nope. So now, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, no, no. You need to, employment reports.
I'm sorry, employment report?
No, he's sitting here. Lencho.
Oh, it's Lencho, yeah. Okay. We'll go to K nineteen. Is there a motion to approve? Uh, well, let...
Right, so there's a recommendation, trustees, to approve the certificated employment report as submitted.
So move.
Moved by Alarado. Second by Castillo, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. K twenty, classified employment report.
The recommendation to approve the classified employment report as submitted with denying the request for unpaid leave of absence for Rocío Ayala Tapia.
Moved by Lencho.
Second.
Second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you so much.
Fifty-one thirty-nine, one minute to go, Collexico's up.
Oh, nice, nice.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Lencho, second by Alarado, Austin Ferris, say aye. Aye. Unanimous, thank you so much. Have a good night.